My microphone was off.
This is John Scott.
Hey Jared.
This time, we will, let's have our invocation. We'll have consideration and approval of the July thirty. Okay, new consider-
It's outside the city limits of Brandon, off of Highway eighty view of the property. Here's the building, it's gonna be a fifth front, three-fourths of the way up. This is in the city limits of Brandon.
Says to be brick on three-
Oh. And what is their-
I think it's located there. You don't think you need to kind of- Pipe, pipe, equipment, stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
Building, building has just got something going with-
Not on this parcel of land.
C three, since it's right there at interstate.
That's in-
I two?
Well, along the highway there-
Way two.
Yeah, it was. They just have that area down through there, the-
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You know where it'd be found when you got budget tax.
Okay, at this time, we will call to order-
Question that came up that we didn't have a complete-
Okay.
To that shit, to even, they don't have really any room to move around with. And to order to bring it to Brandon, that's called capital woods. And by doing that, adding the budgeting to add our third person to ask for mutual aid and then offering- Right there behind the apartments, we're gonna find-
Right.
He's in a light blue shirt.
Hundred twelve at that station.
Okay.
You know, between one seventy and one eighty, hundred, hundred and seventy and hundred eighty is the manpower we've gotta stay up with.
Brown keeps showing me how many permits he's, uh-
We offer it to you.
That's right.
Thank you Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate you Scott.
We're looking at two thousand and fifteen, we're looking at buying in two thousand and fifteen with that number. That's a gear for Shell Road Volunteer Fire Department, and then this fire station up-
If Dave would like, we'll probably keep it in accounting.
We have liability-
Do Walter satellite or-
It'll all be pulled in on the total cost of it into-
Do Sarasota, Florida pick up the new Pierce fire truck? Will we be buying any new vehicles for that fire station?
Flowood's got a problem, I don't know if they got a lemon or what.
Pretty bad shape.
Yeah, may have been just that model.
Okay. Does that answer your question Jay?
Johnson Walters Fire Department.
What did we vote it on as a whole?
Yes. I re-figure on it.
Why would you use that example?
Thank you, I know Brett's got the, get the, and he and Laura have that information.
Is this for both?
The, uh, the, whichever-
Sister off-
Then we talked with Ms. Nguyen and we were able to, uh, million dollars. And I think that's probably the pri- uh, contract with Molarola for this syst- and that system. Although we will have, we'll end up paying four hundred, my best, uh, fifteen, sixteen, uh, that, the, the else. Because we can't take money out of half dollars in financing fees if we do that about it. On, uh, doing some price compare, contract, to sign a contract with Molarola.
Approval of the wireless commission, so, but pending wireless, you know, file-
Hey.
Vote case.
She said-
The commission meets the eighth, and we don't matter what manner we want to finance it.
Well, you know, Lynn has already been in here a couple, Molarola's financing quite frankly was, you know, I'd be happy to ask Lynn to stand then, so, uh, that's-
I make most approve, uh, our country or whatnot.
Yeah.
Or police chiefs.
But, and there's been a lot of work in the first, and with, so I think that we have made some tremendous progress.
Intends to have someone, but that's not always the case if-
I don't know exactly how many these guys, but-
Right.
By the road deputies, we try to have either a volunteer, which like I said, they don't have, you know, when you get the nine-
Service now. Are we gonna check both areas? Basically a week away, so it's, we'd have to do it pretty quick.
You can get in that group. And so every-
How are we gonna make sure this doesn't keep happening?
Last time, I would recommend that go ahead and replace-
You know, to answer your question, Mr.-
You know, one way to resolve it is, going back to piecemeal back together, we got some cars and put it back in, that's eight percent activation rate. We had three or just a good from win, win and maintenance, but I think to your point, you know, if there is an actual emergency. So, I was going with talking about replacing that computer. Since we know it was the sirens, you know, one thing I've told our technicians is the worst. The other day when we didn't think it was working, this time, I think we did, what, one or two?
I know you-
Bill, you said that if we were just done one, that if Paul Robert, I don't think it ever worked.
Almost a month.
And let them know, hey, we've looked at it, we don't see any-
That's us, at least then we can see, but that way, boom, you know, 'cause it's, if it's been done, it's a ta- Westbrook yourself, and, uh-
What you do is the-
We have an X for writing it all down. And- Out of cash, because some of that five million that we have pre- that we've had, not quite as many has gotten done. And forty thousand was all in, in, um, I don't know what, I don't think-
Back on my equipment, independent years, and I'll every three years or so, then you have live bill, common access, whatever, live bill carry-
Right.
Many is fifteen, and I think they, some state aid, what state aid is-
Right.
Tell them, they normally can tell us, you know, if that's time that they can do-
Pass with care and have double, yeah. Okay, but if the concrete, contract-
One is gonna take him to the can, man, if he can't use it.
With it, that's kind of retarded, phone call and you try to answer.
But we don't know exactly when that system may be and where it's at in the process.
If I can understand-
Okay.
System. And it can be as simple as these programs and say you're doing a road, and you can, buddy's comfortable with the system, you can actually, while you're-
So, that's reading, I said, there's a working for construction companies, 'cause so much construction here, nine people are really, one and a half-
Two and one of them quit, so, hire two, and, you know, all the entered involved, materials, you know, did they talk to them and if he could sit, so when you get to it, they gone by next week.
Explain that to them is beyond their-
Some take way more time, so you gotta, that's basically another crew and a half.
You put your time, okay, our company is about-
This one quits, so it doesn't stay consistent.
Is your arms, what, you know, are you-
Hills and Heinz County, whatever, he-
Right now, we have-
After you pay the, pay down, your communications, you're gonna take some-
Or in this year, or early, but then-
Who is doing that?
You got the email, she sends it.
And Jay, that'll all depend on-
Have we not moved that five million over there?
The million of it back into cash.
Okay.
First of the year.
Right.
So, I don't anticipate that-
You could do it, but the issue is-
I usually-
When the communications is important.
The county barn, correct? So, and that's where-
If, uh, not a valid-
Is it, is it in great shape?
Along with the whole, even branding that land.
Stuff like that, and then we're looking at our own projects.
Construction company, they got a big yard, and it's what, where they-
Stop of it. Once you start disturbing it, you're talking about-
To tear it down?
Not just a work order system, we're talking about a business. Now, I'm, I'm not throwing stuff, you know, you're absolutely right.
I mean, you'll know-
Think that it's just gonna be a great tracking system if it's used right.
Rusty looked at this, he was, you know, we've got to do some reporting to K D U, 'cause I don't know whether it's-
Each budget.
Oh.
The, the system hasn't been purchased-
My height is in the ground on-
Or the person operating the system, that you use, that you spent, like this would help determine that. Now, is it worth the-
Different things that are added in a year, and I-
I'm surprised that we've never been dinged on that at all, I mean-
You know, he's already got vacancies in his department.
Improves communications for the road department?
Road department, he's not very far.
What, Matt and Seale are some?
Watch them to think the Matt and Seale's great on those little inner-
Roads, do we have to send out equipment to-
Farthest area or something, because-
Are those people living off?
Yeah, every, one of them's got, I can remember.
Did I hear that road real low?
And, uh, when you do, flood somebody else, you know.
Hmm. Anually, I mean, what's the plan?
That Stowe Road is probably the most heavily traveled, and some of them, I mean, you know, like, we, we try to Matt and-
End of, far end of-
Work back in it, but if, if, once you Matt and Seale the road, travel road is great, but they're not all-
Finished since two thousand and eleven, and I mean, they want to keep up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, once you did that, it starts cr- uh, just worked it, but it's just not sm-
That they put in, I don't know, I think we had to pick up roads.
I don't think we- The rest went to the-
Part of the discussion, putting it all back.
Too fast.
I forgot that we were-
This week out there.
Yeah, with that, you know, we can look at cap the projects on roads, in other words, what road, I have no speaking generalities, but I think it might be out. And so, and going through, and you decide professional that you, here, that's, that's who's sitting back there.
Start talking about it.
Bathroom?
Those types, yes. Uh, and, uh, chance to record, we're gonna have to do some recent-
There's several other counties and cities, and they don't state your hallways, your accessibility issues, but you think, what you wanna do is you wanna branch forward, you know, per hour rate, you know, in some cases, we can all-
Security something solutions. Maybe, there was a, at least there was some sort of the D A H when we come forward with this.
Or what we do at the non-historic portion, okay? Then through cement, et cetera, et cetera.
Then they start screwing around with codes and access to the-
He did a little work for us, I-
That leaks all over, it's plaster on, you need to make sure you're doing this and do that, it was the commission debt. And then familiar with it, Ted Trigg, we are kind of familiar with it already.
Vote on him yet, haven't we? But do you do have, still have that study on the-
Of what we need to do. This is strictly a repair-
One thing about that, uh, his opinion was, it takes a little bit of negligence to get through it.
Start cleaning it out? I don't think so.
But it's something that we need to get on with.
Right.
Actual issues with security.
Right.
Yes.
Lord.
What he said, can't be on Thursday, the fourth, it can't be on the days that's interesting.
If you wanna get a mail, you go down-
Oh, get, get there and decide, because somebody will say that, that video.
When you do credit, I figured y'all be-
Oh. Budget to fix, and right now, we're the goods.
The rest of it. A different amount, and that's a whole different issue.
It's forward, probably by two hundred and sixty to three-
Increase on fifteen through eighteen. Exactly what I was talking about, Mr. Johnson. The cell phone industry developed-
The channel upgrade we were paying on, so we-
They're dropping them right and left, too.
And, but, but don't-
Right, and it's sort of like, we pay it one year, and then, then we have the other big portion, um-
It's not in it anymore, they have manipulat-
I have the team in the front door.
Because of G I S now. Um, that's been added back in here.
Last events coordinator?
No, no, manager plus.
Hour so, I, I thought that we would come out better.
Manager, which basically what Chris does now.
For the county judges?
It's not what he asked for, so.
A, a large election. I don't, I don't know that there'll be any need, I, I mean, that's where that is included, to put a roof there.
Take a look from year to year, he already started doing-
Same thing we did last time, when he wanted by twenty, we said-
What do you update stuff?
Oh, that percentage is, is just the increase.
Four more vehicles and the new roof on the shop.
Deal with it, in terms of running themselves.
Breaker over to the county. Which is what this-
Actually, actually, yeah, me and, they got, I think they bought a couple of- When I was good in the budget, we was talking about it, and he said, and all that, because you're gonna make it up on the other end.
Is look at what you got in this past year.
Yeah.
Yeah, he just told me, I called him, I said, we didn't do-
Yeah, a whole lot of money wasted somewhere.
Oh, Ken was there, yeah.
Um-
For the road part?
Other.
Okay.
Jay, I think it's eight years.
In there every year.
They don't look at any of that.
Exceed it.
Like, why, that'd be the way to-
So then we come back to general-
I don't know, Jay, I don't know how we do that, other than that would be a directive from y'all, I don't know how we would do it in the format of the documents, because it's not associated with the TIF. That would just have to be a directive from the board as a whole saying, this is the-
Should we do that for you?
How's that impact the municipalities?
It doesn't, well, it does on the, it does on the road and bridge, because it, it pulls it out of there.
Percentages of it.
So that's, I mean, I think you need to understand that.
Absolutely, yeah.
You gotta tell them.
Your road and bridge won't get it back.
But that's the road bridge that, it's from the municipality that's gonna benefit, so I'm sure they'd be more happy to give it up.
Yeah, they will, I have no doubt, and we have some examples where, I mean Pearl did that.
Yeah.
They allowed the entirety of their road and bridge-
Yeah.
Uh, to, to go for debt service.
Right.
On that particular TIF.
How much do we get, how much do they get back, Flowood?
No, no, it was Pearl.
No, how much do they, would they, on, on what they get back, how would this affect, would they, if we-
I don't know how it breaks down.
Well, the cities get half of the road.
Was collected within their municipality.
I know, but I don't know what it, that's what I'm asking, what would that be, would that be, how close, how many thousand would it be?
A percentage of everybody.
That's what I thought, please.
Yes, it would hit a percentage of everybody.
It's not just limited to that TIF district, it's pulling like that, it's gonna pull every municipality's percentage of the dollars that are committed by the county out of road and bridge for that debt service.
But here's the thing, it would be a portion of the other municipalities' road and bridge.
It wouldn't be just from Flowood.
Away from them, because they don't have it now, this is gonna be new growth generated.
That's true.
So we're not taking anything away from them.
That's true. Yep, because it's the increment that we're talking about, so-
Yeah, that's accurate.
They would get exactly what they are getting now.
Yeah.
They just wouldn't be-
But they would not benefit from the increase in value on that area that is subject to the TIF.
Correct.
Yeah.
Till after the bond is paid off.
Right.
So if we took it and, and directed road and bridge to be put in that, leave general count, which we probably should have done before now, because, I don't know why we've always done that, because we keep road and bridge, we can't spend none but on road and bridge, yeah.
Keeps on growing.
That's where we need to spend it.
But no, we got eighteen million in the bank.
There's plenty of place to spend it, though.
Well, I'm just saying, though, in future ones, we don't necessarily need to withhold all road and bridge.
Well, and to Jay's point, you are talking, I mean, we're talking about debt servicing the increase.
Yeah, we're not taking away any, it's just future.
It's not current dollars, it's the pledge of future dollars that we're talking about.
Of the growth of the new development.
Right.
So, we're not taking anything away from anybody.
Yeah, and again, on these TIFs, we're talking about numbers, we're hearing numbers, um, and it's so, and put the two fifty to the side, because that's a firm commitment. They've asked for a pledge.
Right.
A grant, and that, so that's current revenue pledged for that purpose, all right? But just on the TIF, uh, you know, technically, what you are doing is you're committing to a, generally to an amount, we did that in Bloomfield, we said up to eleven million dollars. The bond issue on Bloomfield is gonna be closer to six, and so you, you may be here in eleven, but it's totally dependent upon what happens, once those infrastructure improvements are put into place, and the development comes online. And until that happens-
Yeah.
You don't really know exactly what you're gonna be committing to. So, if the, if the development can't service the debt, the county does not, is not obligated to a number that it can't cover out of the Avalon.
So-
Yeah, but it's gonna be based, the number that I gave you is based off the value of what we're gonna be ass- assessing it at, and they're saying fifty-five million is what that number came off of, so it could be possibly lower than fifty-five million.
It could be.
Forty-five million.
It could be.
You know, so.
But you've got a five million dollar commitment that has been asked for.
Yeah.
So, Jay, what you're saying is, help me understand what you're saying, how did you get to a hundred thousand dollar commitment?
If we're gonna, Jay, our millage, the additional millage from the twenty-one mills that we'll commit for the TIF.
Which is what, half of our?
It's like thirty, what is it, thirty, how many mills?
Thirty something, thirty-
Thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six?
Thirty-six point something.
Yeah.
I thought, I said thirty-eight, so must be, yeah.
Thirty, thirty something.
And Rankin first, library, all that's out of there, right? It's just the county portion.
No, that thirty, that thirty something is everything within general county. That is Rankin first, that is library, that's road, bridge, Heinz.
That's thirty-six percent.
Everything.
Okay, so the additional fifteen mills-
Is thirty-eight.
That are still out there in touch.
That would generate one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'm with you now.
And that's where I got, we're net a hundred thousand.
I'm tracking with you now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you put that over twenty years, that's two million dollars. But as, you know, as a development sits there, it appreciates in value most of the time rather than depreciate, so that number should even come down better in our favor, uh, as it grows in value, then we'll just be receiving more and have more off of it.
I, I'm tracking with you now.
What is our, our millage is thirty-six or thirty-eight?
No, it's, it's closer, it's thirty-eight something, because it's pretty close to forty, I just don't have that sheet in front of me.
I told them about they thirty-eight.
Yeah.
I was getting that in my head.
It is, it, 'cause it's a, it's closer to forty, so it's thirty-eight point something, thirty-eight point eight three.
And we're gonna obligate, what'd you say, twenty-one? What'd you say, what'd you twenty, what's the-
The TIF for the hotel?
Twenty-one.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we always match what the cities have done.
And they're on a twenty-one.
That's what we did on the other ones, and we matched what they did, and theirs is twenty-one. Which, we got a policy for that already anyway, I mean-
Yeah, so thirty million.
Yeah, twenty, I think.
Was it twenty?
Yeah.
Forty point two four.
Thirty, it's thirty. I tried to make it sixty before.
Laura, do you know how many people we got on the TIF?
Forty point.
How many people?
Two four.
How many TIF projects we have?
TIF projects?
Fire and all that.
Forty-nine point four two for schools.
We have the four corners, we have Urquon, we have Stone Creek, we have, um, Market. Uh, we have, huh?
Do you get Bloomfield?
Bloomfield, then, um, we've got a couple. Yeah, but it hadn't come on yet, so, eight.
I think we counted the other day, at least eight.
And every single one of those is the TIF we've done, I, I don't understand why we don't, are not in favor of it, because if we had not done the TIF, and the land was not developed-
Oh, we do.
That land was only gonna be worth a thousand dollars today.
You wouldn't have anything.
Actors developers worth a hundred thousand or a million, so we still getting more off of it than we ever were before.
Right. People think we losing money, we're really not losing money here.
Forty point two four.
And eventually, we're really gonna be kicking some TIF.
I'm gonna let you go out there and you will, what about explaining?
I wasn't thinking about, I wasn't thinking about it.
That was your predecessor.
That's a P I.
That's a P I, that ain't got nothing to do with it, TIF. That's a P I. Have you seen us do a P I since we've been in?
I don't know, I mean, as is now, we, we raise taxes, and I think we're about to spend every bit of money that we have by doing this budget, which includes raises and other items.
Well, let me ask you this then, Jay, here's, here's the bottom line. Say you don't give a raise this year, what you gonna do next year? Don't be, don't expect it.
I'm just saying, give them opportunity to take off some of their vacation time and take money that way.
They don't have any, that's the thing. The ones that gonna need it, the most are the ones that don't have any.
How you gonna-
That's what bothers, bothers me about it.
You know, that all comes back to the part where, you know, people aren't giving raises every year out in the private sector, so, I mean-
Well, the private sector now, there is a difference between private, to me, private sector and government, I mean-
There's a huge difference, 'cause right now, everybody got it sweet right here, because we're paying their retirement, we're paying their insurance.
Uh, I don't know, not all, not everybody.
Every employees, we pay every employee's insurance, and even, we're subsidizing their family coverage.
What about their deductibles? You're not paying comple- we're not paying complete.
Well, yeah, but you're not, yeah, if you're in private sector, you pay it all, though.
Insurance was deductibles, now health insurance, out in the real world.
Oh, a thousand dollars.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
And all of them want a five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody wants five thousand dollars.
Really?
Yeah. So, I mean, heck, there's even some counties that five thousand dollars in deductible right now.
Now, that doesn't mean that they have to spend five thousand before they start paying.
Kind of plan.
They have a drug card, and they have a, a, what do you call that, with the car copay? The copay when you go into the doctor's office.
Yeah, but-
But, and all kind, there's an awful lot of tests that can be done on outpatient basis that don't, you just pay your copay.
Our employees stack pretty good.
Your regular, your regular insurance is gonna be, you're still paying-
Anybody that works for the state agency.
Three fifty up.
Best advantage of retirement.
For any type of insurance, and you're gonna have five thousand dollars to double.
Calls out the private sector.
Premium.
It's four oh one paid plans, and you're even, it's even possible you might lose all your money there.
I've worked out in it, I can assure you of that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a seat where the public out there can appreciate.
We're catastrophic, I'll tell you real quick, we're catastrophic.
And I think that's kind of, honestly, that's why I feel, is that, I, I think people are looking at us to try to spend their money the way they spending theirs, and they don't give raises to their employees every year, or they don't get a raise every year. And if it is, it's not a guaranteed three to five percent every year.
We gave one last year, didn't give one the year before, right? Is that right? Is that correct?
Not giving a raise one time.
Right. That was when things were really bad.
And that was in the really tight, was that twelve?
I think so, yeah.
That's when we did the, that's when we increased state taxes.
Year before we did an increase.
Yep.
And first, you know, we pay first, and of course, well, the county pays the big portion of it, and I'm sure that's going up again here.
I don't have anything to show that it is, I'm not, in fact, next Thursday, next Thursday morning, I have a meeting with first, or one of our annual meetings, to find out what they maybe are gonna anticipate. But I've not gotten anything.
But by giving them opportunity to buy some of their vacation time, it's not necessarily give them a raise, but it's give them opportunity to get some additional money.
Only thing, though, Jay, the ones that need it the most are the ones that not gonna have it, and, and you can't, those that are on, the lower paid ones, they're not gonna have that. They're the ones that, they're the ones that gonna get hurt the most by not doing it. I understand what you're talking about in other places, but, correct me if I'm wrong, those that need, that will need the raise the most, the ones that won't have any time.
So then why don't we do?
So how do you?
Or, uh, or just do an increase according to the cost of living? Granted, it's not perfect, but it's not three percent either.
It's the cost of living, right.
And what is it right now?
That's what we came up with, wasn't it, with the, what, the twelve hundred?
One point five, which is half of basically what this is, so you're talking six hundred.
Well, just call it seven fifty.
That's where we tried to put it at last year, seven fifty.
That's why I want to say last year, so we can give another one this year.
That's exactly what we said last year. Do the seven fifty.
Half, nine, half, next year.
Mm-hmm, that's what we talked about doing last year, and then we, you know, that was my thought, I don't know, maybe Jay's, but, so not going with the twelve. You know, the, somewhere, somewhere has a factory in, jobs aren't easy to find out there.
I know, my wife's been unemployed for eight months.
I got them, I got them coming by my shop and calling me weekly.
She drive a tractor?
She work for the county.
Oh, that's right.
That's right.
Or else I might want a trainer.
You'd have to recuse yourself.
Yeah. We, we, we keep doing that, we'd all have to get up and leave the room, nobody left to vote.
Would keep going, eat it, let's stay out of the room.